Good evening, I'm calling the 67th voting session to order. And first we would have invocation followed right behind that by the pledge of allegiance to Pastor Craig from Central Maryland Youth for Christ Executive Director. Please stand.
Let us pray. Father God, we first off just thank you for this day that you've given us, Lord. Father, we thank you for the very breath that we have to breathe. So many times, Father, we take so many little things for granted. God, I just want to go to Scripture in Philippians, Lord 4:13, it says that "I can do all things through Christ who gives me strength." So, Lord, not knowing anyone really in this room tonight, Father, but a couple of people, I don't know their circumstances, but God, I know you. So I lift their health, their homes, their finances, family, friends, Lord, whatever they may be going through, Father, I pray that they would find the strength to endure and get through it. And Father, I also pray for the strength, Lord, that will be needed tonight in this meeting, the wisdom, the knowledge, Lord, even a listening ear, so that, Father, when everyone leaves tonight, they can say that they've done what they needed to do and they did it well. Bring glory and honor to you, Father, in all that is said and done. God, again, we give you the praise, we give you the glory, and we thank you for being the awesome God that you are, that we have to serve. I praise you again for this time and I ask your blessings upon every person in this room, Lord, in Jesus mighty powerful name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Some announcements, rules of procedure, use of cell phones during meetings is restricted. All correspondence for distribution for elected officials should be provided to the city clerk and should include a copy for the city clerk for inclusion in the official record. Our meeting schedule for May is Tuesday, May 2nd, work session at 4:00 PM. Tuesday, May 9th, work session at 4:00 PM. Tuesday, May 9th, there'll be a public hearing at 7:00 PM for physical year tax rate in the physical year budget. Tuesday, May 16th, there's a work session at 4:00 PM. Tuesday, May 23rd, regular session at 7:00 PM. Tuesday, May 30th, there will be no meeting. And then I have proclamation, Second Chance Month given to Karen Hayes, who works for the state of Maryland. Hi. You look more nervous than me. This is proclamation for Second Chance Month, which is April. Whereas every person is endowed with human dignity, and whereas redemption and second chances are American values, and whereas 15,623 individuals located in 24 Maryland state prisons and held in custody at private prisons or local jails will eventually return to communities where they leave incarceration, and whereas individuals with a criminal history often struggle reunited with family and peers to find housing, find employment, or enroll in educational opportunities, and whereas local, state, and federal leaders recognize these barriers and continue to develop programs and policies to make it easier for these justice-involved individuals to lead healthy and successful lives, and whereas providing resources for the formerly incarcerated is a community-wide effort among local reentry councils, faith-based organizations, and the state, and whereas the designation of April as Second Chance Month contributes to increase public awareness about the reentry needs of returning citizens and opportunities for individuals, employers, congregations, and communities to extend second chances. Now therefore, I, Tekeisha Martinez, Mayor of the City of Hagerstown, designate April a Second Chance Month and encourage our citizens to join in this worthy observation. Thank you for the work that you do. Thank you so much. (applause) Next proclamation is for gatekeepers. This is April 23rd through 29th is reentry week. So Bill Gertner and Jennifer Collier, could you guys join me up front? Hi, Bill. Whereas nationwide, reentry programs exist to help offenders transition from prison back to communities, and whereas 15,623 individuals located in 24 Maryland state prisons and held in custody at private prisons or local jails will eventually reenter communities where they leave incarceration, and whereas Gatekeepers was created for inmates and ex-offenders entirely by ex-offenders who had experienced the challenges to reenter society after being incarcerated, and whereas Gatekeepers team assesses the needs of each person who walks through the door and works to understand the unique obstacles, hardships, and challenges each face, and whereas Gatekeepers has helped hundreds of men and women prepare their personal reentry plan using Gatekeepers Business of Living Workbook. And this workbook is on tablets in over 235 correctional institutions around the nation, and whereas the designation of April 23rd through to 29th as reentry, we contribute to increase public awareness about the reentry needs of returning citizens. Now therefore, I, Tekeisha Martinez, Mayor of the City of Hagerstown, designate April 23rd to April 29th as reentry week and encourage our citizens to join in that worthy observation. Thank you, thank you, thank you for the tireless work that you do. Thank you, thank you for the work that you do with no, nothing coming in because you believe in it, you believe in our community, and I am so grateful that you are here and that Gatekeepers is here. Thank you. (applause) Pictures. Right on top. (laughter) With that, we'll have citizen comments. So first up, we have Michelle Rosner. And could you please state your address for the record, please? And you have three minutes.
Hi, my name's Michelle Rosner. I live at 207 North Cannon Avenue. There's three things I would like to talk about today. Two of them I've been thinking about for a long time, last one is last. So the first one, I have ideas for the Community Action Council with their emergency funds and funding for heat and AC emergency shut-offs. I would like to help with some kind of initiative to take some of those funds and repurpose them for solar onto those roofs and those people who need that help to reduce their cost of living. And as we know, the cost of living and the cost of energy is never going to go down. So I would like to look into ways to reduce that cost of living across blocks in the city. The second would be the Washington County Soil Conservation Program for water barrel accessibility. You have to still purchase it, which is okay, and get the rebate back. I would like to see some more public notices maybe ramped up for that and some more recommended installers to work with on that. And third, but definitely not last, I am here to speak up about the dirt bike and ATV riders in Hagerstown. I know that legislation was created to decriminalize youth for 13 and under so that their activities get redirected in more positive direction, and I understand that. And is there a public response from the City of Hagerstown about what they are doing to redirect youth that under the age of 13 as a part of that legislation that kept them from being a part of the court system? And then there's a nonprofit in Baltimore called B360 where they're actually just acquired 10 million in funding to build a dirt bike park, not only for recreational personal use, but it would also create revenue. We have been under a lot of violence and targeting and a general feeling of not being safe trying to walk from my house to Fairgrounds Park because of the dirt bike riders. They have no fear. I appreciate the positive action that has occurred so far to get them off the streets. And I would also like to know that the ones that are coming up in the future generations will have an outlet for that activity in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Amanda Park. And could you please state your address for the record, please? And you have three minutes.
I'm Ms. Amanda Park. I live at 669 Westwood Street. 669 Westwood Street. The reason I'm here today is because, as Michelle stated, my main thing is wanting to try to do something about the dirt bike and ATV riders. On April 4th, myself, my kids, and my family, they were attacked very violently. They chased us through town. They totaled my car, they dumped on top of my car, smashed in the windows. The cops came, one cop came, and then after there was an altercation, several others came. I know that they've been trying to catch them for a long time. I know there's policies that they can't chase them, but there has to be some other ways that we can figure out something to stop this. My daughter is terrified to leave the house now. She's 17, just got her license, and she won't even drive. So I just really wanted to try to figure out something that we can do so other people don't go through what we just had to go through.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I want you to know that I had the opportunity to investigate a little bit about what happened to you, and I'm very sorry that that happened to you and your family.
Next up, we have Mr. Jeremy Forrest. And could you come up and state your name and address for the record?
Thank you.
Yes. Mr. Steve Hummel, could you come up and state your name for the record and address, please? And you have three minutes.
Sure, thank you. My name is Steve Hummel. I live at 1029 Potomac Avenue in Hagerstown. And initially, I came here to thinking that there was absolutely nothing being done, and I would have changed that to express my thanks to Chief Kifer for the effort they've stepped forward onto this. I can say that it has decreased. I'm not sure whether it is because of the social media posts, or the activity of the use of the drones, or the fact that the weather got cold again. I'm hoping it's actually because they're scared to be out and doing that, because ironically, it hasn't been near as bad the last couple of days. However, I will mention that on my way driving here, somebody passed me on the right at the corner and went through the light at the corner of Manila and Potomac. And so it's still going on, but it's definitely decreased significantly. So you're making an effort, and I want to publicly thank the chief and the police department's effort for stepping up on that, because it is very dangerous. Because in our end of town, they drive on the sidewalks. They'll break away from the pack, come up on a driveway apron, and just buzz right down the sidewalks at 35, 40 miles an hour, and somebody is going to get hurt, whether it be the rider or somebody that's walking, because we have a lot of people that walk in our neighborhood out there. So I just, again, express my thanks for all the efforts that everybody is doing, and I hope we can continue to, you know, excuse me, come to a conclusion to bring this, to smooth it over, make everybody happy. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Ms. Mary Waters, could you come up and name an address for the record, please?
Mary Waters, 602 Sunset Avenue, right behind City Park and right near Virginia Avenue, which is a raceway. Every night, midnight, 1:00 AM, motorbikes, vehicles, four-wheelers doing their, what I call circus routine. And my porch faces where I can actually see, and I've gotten film, but I put a posting on the Nextdoor website, which Bob has been watching, and I asked neighbors to post their stories. And I have five pages of stories that I'd like to put into record of different, what I call close encounters of the ugly kind by the youths of Hagerstown. I realize, and I spoke with the chief, that his hands are tied with some things, but I'm sure there's something else we can do. I believe the more we report and identify who these kids are and where they live, the more we can crack down and get rid of some of this illegal activity, because as Steve said, someone's going to get hurt, and it's going to not be pretty.
Someone did get hurt, yeah.
Right, I'm sorry. I'm sorry for you. And this is not where we want to live. We don't want to be known as Little Baltimore. We don't want to go there. We want to be Hagerstown, a beautiful hub city that it used to be. So whatever I can do, you tell me, I'll help you. And I'm sure all these other folks who I'm going to, I'm not going to read their names off, but I want it to be known, and they asked me to please get this put into the public minutes. They want to do their part, too. So you tell us what you need, and we'll help you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Ms. Waters.
Thank you.
Mr. Mark, is it Bruh?
That's a no.
I'm sorry, how do you pronounce it?
It's B-R-U-G-H, like brew.
Brew?
Like tea or beer.
Nice. Mr. Brew, could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, it's Mark Bruh of 952 Mulberry Avenue. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. In advance of my remarks, I wanted to thank the mayor, who kindly answered an email that I sent in recent days, Councilman Schindler, who also responded to an inquiry I made to him, and City Administrator Nice Warner. We had a nice email exchange. So I'm coming from a different position, and I think some of you may be aware of my position. Action to address the problem of illegal unregistered racing vehicles has been slow coming. For a very long time now, I've wondered if the council would ever take meaningful action. Now, I don't mean to dismiss the efforts and the discussions that you've had. I understand those take place. I'm talking about meaningful actions. A few years ago, the Hagerstown Police Department asked citizens to take pictures of quads and dirt bikes, and one Sunday evening, we, my wife and I, were out planting our front garden beds when a lone dirt bike came speeding up the street. I took a photo as it passed, and the bike driver noticed and stopped. They started to yell at me that no one could do anything to stop them. No one can do anything. I ignored the driver, and I dug another hole. Seconds later, and honestly, I was amazed at how quickly it happened. I was surrounded by 12 to 14 quads, dirt bikes, popping wheelies, doing burnouts in the street, driving over sidewalks, driving into yards, and driving up into driveways. There was an effort to intimidate me as they told me they were going to beat my UTE. We retreated into the house, and we called the city police, who unfortunately, since the dirt bikes had dispersed, and because of staffing, they were unable to respond, and I had a nice discussion with the, I think, the duty sergeant about their lack of staffing at the time. So this is why I'm here. The city has known about this problem for years, and only recently, last week, has anything meaningful happened. That's my own estimation. You may feel different. But we have a long way to go yet, and I think some of that's been alluded to by previous speakers, and we need to get you to lead us. The primary function of government is to assure the safety of citizens. Make no mistake, the racing of these vehicles on our streets is a danger to everyone. Threats to conduct assault are an offshoot threat to people who heed the police suggestions. And I'm sorry, I don't know your particular circumstances, but I'm miserable about that, and I feel very much pain for you. From the outset of the problem years ago, I heard from city officials that nothing can be done. I heard this over and over. If now I say that I'm disappointed that nothing has, if I say it, that nothing has been done, I'm only repeating what I was told. Last summer, I wrote to the mayor and council, and the mayor contacted me. She first replied to my email, and the opening phrase of her email essentially said, "Nothing can be done."
So that's your, that's three minutes.
Am I finished? Do I use my three minutes?
Can you, do you have two more sentences?
I'm, yeah, literally almost there.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. And so then I made two suggestions. One, let's have weekly updates. Tell us what's going on weekly, whether it's the council, whether it's some city staff member, whether it's the police department. And two, create a task force. Involve citizens, get them involved in the discussion. And in closing, I would say, can you imagine where we would be today if we had taken either one of those steps? And I thank you for giving me the extra time to address that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll take a minute to this. Does anybody else like to speak? Three minutes?
Can I say something? I've asked some members of HPD to be here this evening so they could go over some numbers that we have, that they have put together over probably the last 18 to 24 months. Can I get one of you guys, Chief, can you address that? When people say that we haven't done anything, and we've, you know, your pleas have fallen on deaf ears, that's not true whatsoever.
And I want to also say that I understand the language that we use of "nothing can be done" and those types of things. Saying that there is a state law that we can't do specific things doesn't mean we can't be creative. And I believe that we have collaborated and done that, and so, Chief, if you would, but also, I'm not, I don't respond and answer things that are on social media when it comes to public safety while investigations are going on. And so I was very, a little bit frustrated, because we have been having these conversations about drones being purchased, and, you know, the training that needed to happen with it, we've been having those in work sessions. And so I just hear my heart on that, that there's just things that I don't feel as though should happen on Facebook. It should happen on social media. So Chief, thank you for being here and giving us that update.
Thank you. And to everyone in the room that's frustrated or had something tragic happen to them, and I'm very sorry for what's happened, we are frustrated as well. Trust me, the men and women that wear the uniform that see this happening in front of them are equally as frustrated. The issue, and I'm going to clarify, is that we can chase, it's a futile attempt to do so with dirt bikes and four-wheelers, for the simple reason of what you mentioned. They ride up onto the sidewalks, they'll go the wrong way up a street. They'll do things that makes it impossible for us to catch them to do that. So when we say, when our guys show up and say we have a no chase policy, that's not actually accurate, it's just that it's not feasible to do so. It's also very dangerous. It's dangerous for not just the rider we're chasing, but it's dangerous for the public. And as you heard tonight, they run red lights, they'll run through stop signs, intersections. If we're chasing them, they're going to do that even more. And the person that hits them has to live with that consequence, because they've become a victim themselves. They have to be the people that put up with that. So I wanted to clear that up. There is not a policy that says that we don't chase. And in the past, there's been accusations that the mayor, the former mayor, was directing us that we weren't allowed to chase. There's never been the case. The mayor of Hagerstown doesn't tell me what to do and my agency what to do. We have policies that guide us, and we are an accredited agency that does those best practices. With that being said, last October, this body approved us to buy drones. We spent a lot of money to get those drones. They came in December. And to fly a drone, you basically need a pilot's license. You have to go through the FAA, you have to take a test, you have to do that. There's significant training goes along with that. So we've contracted out with the company to do that, to deal with all our legal paperwork to be able to fly these things. That took time. So we have five more operators out of 12, 12 operators, and in the next two weeks, we'll have, everybody will be certified. So we have 12 operators, we have 14 drones, four major drones that we can fly. Eric, if you're listening, if you can play the video that we posted today that we wanted to get out last week, I would like just to share with the public that haven't seen this on our Facebook page. This was from one of the incidents that we did last week, of one of the details we've done. And as you can see, there's the dirt bike rider right there in the middle of that screen, and this is our drone following them. And you're going to watch what they do without anybody chasing them. They're going to come through to the square. This is our street cameras that we have. We're using those as well in conjunction with our drones. So this is in the square, and these two dirt bike riders are going to decide to go the wrong way up Washington Street onto oncoming traffic, for no reason. They were not being chased. The person you see on the right, that's an e-bike, that's not a dirt, that's not a dirt bike, that's a regular bicycle, one of the electric bicycles, but to the left is the dirt bike riders. So we clipped together this footage to show the public the technology that we're trying to use to get around the inability to chase them without causing harm and to be effective. So as you see, they're coming back down here. You're going to see later in the clip that one of the dirt bike riders goes up the wrong way up another street again. We had that evening, Captain, how many units did we have out working that detail that night? So we had 15 officers out working this detail, multiple drone operators, they're going up the wrong way up Locust Street. You're going to see them, the driver drops off his buddy who takes off running, he comes back down. So we're, at the same time that you're seeing this, the drones still follow on this dirt bike rider. We're just not showing all the footage from that. We're trying to show what they're doing, as you guys are all aware of, you're seeing it and have seen it. This young man decides he's going to go home and hide, but this is what he doesn't realize. He didn't realize there was a drone in the sky watching him. He didn't realize the drone was calling in, the guys that were out in the cars waiting to do the takedown to make this arrest. And as he's off his bike, getting ready to hide it behind his house, in comes the Calvary, and off to the foot chase he goes. And again, as he's running, our drone operators are calling in to the guys where he's headed to. You've seen this before. You've seen it in big cities like Los Angeles that have helicopters that do this. We're doing this with a drone that costs $15,000. We're doing this so that we can stay safe and we can do all the things we can do for the public. So he runs across the street, tries to hide behind the wall. Well, it didn't work out for him. So in this case, this was a juvenile. Our guys come up, they catch him, they take him into custody. The bike that he was on was stolen. So since Thursday, a week ago, we've ran three details. all the footage from that. We're trying to show what they're doing. As you guys are all aware of, you're seeing it and have seen it. This young man decides he's going to go home and hide. But this is what he doesn't realize. He didn't realize there was a drone in the sky watching him. He didn't realize the drone was calling in, the guys that were out in the cars waiting to do the takedown to make this arrest. And as he's off his bike, getting ready to hide it behind his house, in comes the Calvary. And off to the foot chase he goes. And again, as he's running, our drone operators are calling in to the guys where he's headed to. You've seen this before. You've seen it in big cities like Los Angeles that have helicopters that do this. We're doing this with a drone that costs fifteen thousand dollars. We're doing this so that we can stay safe and we can do all the things we can do for the public. So he runs across the street, tries to hide behind the wall. Well, it didn't work out for him. So in this case, this was a juvenile. Our guys come up, they catch him, they take him into custody. The bike that he was on was stolen. So since Thursday, a week ago, we've ran three details with the drones and with uniformed officers out working this kind of case. We've seized six dirt bikes, made seven arrests. Four of those six dirt bikes were stolen. Now, I've seen on Facebook, they want us to post pictures and identify them. If they're juveniles, we cannot do that. By law, we're not allowed to do that. So we will not do that. So we are taking every step we can to address this. In the last eighteen months or so, we have seized over sixty bikes, twenty of which were stolen. We've made countless arrests. We have, we have storage units that we've had to rent to put these things in until we can legally take care of what we're going to do with them. I will say this, the frustration level, we get. This is why we spend a lot of money to go down the drone path. But I will also say that the idea of taking out the frustration that I'm hearing, that I've heard this young lady over here tell me about prior to the meeting, is that we are going to have a little fun. We're going to offer up, in the very near future, some of these dirt bikes that we seize that are ours. And we're going to let the public, public come out, we're going to give you a sledgehammer, we're going to put a hard hat on you, we're going to let you take your frustration out on those dirt bikes. And then, we are going to donate that money-
Well, you're going to pay because it's going to be a fundraiser, yeah.
We're going to fundraise for a nonprofit like the Police Athletic League to put that money to good use for our youth. So those are the things that we're going to try to do. And to, to answer one of your questions about what are we doing for our youth, last week, we brought up an initiative that we started community-wide. It's called ENB, Ending Needless Violence With Our Youth. We have a coalition of partners, both government agencies and nonprofits, that are working on just that, addressing those issues, to get them before they start doing the things they're doing, to do the prevention aspect. So we're going to be very aggressive on that moving forward. This body's allowed us to take on that as the lead on that initiative. So before, it was kind of hodgepodge. We are now the lead organization taking that on, moving forward. So we're working hard. Those sixty dirt bikes that we've talked about, a lot of those sir, came from people giving us tips, telling us where these bikers are storing their bikes, who they are, who's riding them. We still want people to do that. We'll still take that investigative approach and, and not have to go to the drone aspect while they're out running around. We'll, we'll take that route. And we'll, and we'll seize those bikes and we'll charge where we can within the law that we have to do. One last thing, for parents and guardians that are out there, that are allowing this to happen, that are buying the dirt bikes for their kids to ride on the streets illegally, there is a criminal charge that we will come after you for, for doing that. And it's something that we've talked to our state's attorney's office about, that they'll be the ones bringing the actual charge. But no longer are you going to be able to sit back and say, "My kid's out of control." If we can prove that you're enhancing their ability to commit these crimes and do these actions, you will be charged with a criminal act, even if we can't charge your under thirteen-year-old child. So the days of saying that we're not doing anything, the days of saying that we're sitting back waiting to do the minimum we can do, we're taking every step that we can to make sure that we're going to solve this problem. And I appreciate you saying you've seen very few are out there, limited out there, Mr. Hummel. I can tell you that we've seen that as well. Our complaints have dropped, have dropped off just in the last week compared to the two weeks before. We're hearing less and less of the dirt bikes out there. We believe it's because of our actions and not because it's just gotten cold. Because prior to this, they were running around in the cold, it didn't matter. So those large groups, the ones that attacked you, we have not seen. And if they come back out, we will be out there to deal with them. We now have what you just seen here, and they can't run away from that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Sure.
I would take one of the identified, the one that, so will those parents be charged?
Yes, if you come over and talk, well, I talked to the state's attorney's office, but if you talk to one of my-
He said I was told that he would be charged with a criminal infringement, but that was going to be going through to the law court, so nothing would be done.
It depends on his age. I don't know what his age is. All right, he's old enough to be charged, he's old enough to be charged then. He's old enough to be charged through the juvenile system.
He's older than thirteen.
Under age of thirteen can't go through the juvenile system unless it's a crime of violence. And that's a state legislative mandate that's been changed this year. That's not this body, that's not county commissioners, that state legislators made that change.
He gave me the state that he would identify him with, so that's fair.
So yes, those charges will be filed, we'll be dealing with that. And I know our state's attorneys are on board, they understand what we're trying to do, they feel the frustration as well. And I know our judges do as well. So it's just whatever they're able to do within the law, they're going to do. Okay?
Thank you. I got one more thing I want to add. I was fortunate enough last week to be out with HPD to do this, this project that they had going on. And I found it astonishing that our officers were, were following one. It was a, a, a young man and a young woman. She was on the front of the bike with no shoes, no helmet. He dropped her off on the street. Our officers picked her up, took her to her house. And her mom came out and belittled the police officer for, if, you know, "This is your fault if you weren't chasing them." And I, I'm sorry, we have a problem, there is no doubt. And it's time for our parents to start parenting and teaching these children that they should not be out on the street like this. They are going to get hurt. I mean, it's going to happen. We saw that. It was probably eleven, twelve years ago now, out in the North End, one right through a stop sign, ran into an SUV, lost his life. I mean, it happens. So please, if you're out there, parents, please talk to your children. That's all we're asking. Just please talk to them and tell them, you know, there's places to do this. I understand we don't have a designated dirt bike track anywhere. But you know what? When I was growing up, I didn't have one either. And, you know, we found a field, a field somewhere, a farmer's field, and that's where we did it at, you know? We didn't do it on the streets. So that's it. I'm done, I'm done. I'm getting off the phone.
You sure?
I am, man. I'm sorry.
All right.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not sure that everybody is aware of the law as far as the first amendment, which is why they're sending, "Why don't you do this?" When his hands are tied by what the state has said. Maybe in a posting, the law says this, and then people will understand a little better versus thinking that nothing has been there.
For after the law.
Because I don't know all the laws.
Yeah, I get it.
Thank you.
I'll read it next.
Next up, I guess we're at public hearing. So, and that is Joanna Wu and Kathy Ma. Sorry.
Thank you, guys.
Cops up, Kathy.
So before you get started, if you would please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm under the penalties of perjury that the responses given and statements made will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you. And then state your name and address. Please.
Okay, Joanna Wu, I guess. I'm discussing the land management code text amendments that we proposed. We brought this up last week briefly, but I'll be going more in depth. So this is ZT 2023-01. So a little bit about the background. The land management code is chapter 140 of the city code, and it's a consolidation of four previous standalone ordinances. Instead of having four separate one, we just have one now. Typically, the land management code is reviewed and proposed. Is this one not working? Okay, cool. Typically, the land management code is reviewed and proposed on an annual basis, but due to some time constraints and urgent matters, we're doing this earlier than usual. This package has four proposals. The first one is modifying restrictions in the local conversion district. Second one is permitting dog daycare facilities. Third is clarifying provisions related to cannabis uses. And the fourth one is to correct simplified plat processes. The planning commission held a public review meeting on March 29th and accepted public comment for a ten-day period thereafter. We received one comment in support of the amendments from Dr. Eklund. The planning commission also met on the 12th recommending the mayor and council the following recommendations. So the first one is regarding local conversion districts. Currently additions in the local conversion district can only be built in the area least visible to the public, which usually means the rear. However, Dr. Eklund, the owner of Forsyth Street, proposed this text amendment to be, remove the restrictions so an addition could be built at the front of his building. That's kind of a little cut-together piece, piece-together graphic where that's his property, and you can see there's no area on the sides or in the back to build an addition, so it has to go in the front. The second one is regarding dog daycares. This proposal would permit dog daycare facilities in the CCMU and NMU zoning districts. This provision was to draw a distinction between dog daycares and kennels. Currently, we allow, there's provisions regarding kennels in the land management code. And we wanted to draw that stark difference, that dog daycare is a daycare and that there aren't overnight uses in kennels or kennels so they can be overnight. Dog daycares will have different performance standards outlined depending on the zoning district to protect nearby residents. So they're a little bit more rigorous in the downtown zoning districts. Kathy, do you want to take this one? Okay, I think I can do it. This was, the state is going to release their law on July 1st for the cannabis reform bill. So this kind of includes permitting adult-use cannabis, prohibiting establishments for mixing of alcohol and tobacco with cannabis, permitting micro grower licenses for spaces that are 10,000 square feet or less. Private growing in a residence will also be allowed with restrictions on the number of plants cultivated. They're also going to set up a process for conversion licenses for existing medical cannabis-growing, processing, and dispensing operations, and also allow local government to prohibit onsite cannabis consumption facilities. What is being proposed in our amendment is to clarify what the city already permits, so allow cannabis where tobacco operations are permitted. Currently, in the code right now, cannabis was originally interpreted as a pharmacy, and so it's allowed where retail is permitted, permitted, and that will change a little bit. It'll also limit existing non-cannabis uses to their intended use. So if it's a hookah or vape lounge, they're only to have tobacco and no other substance. It'll also place limits on growing operations in the downtown area. So for indoor plant cultivation and processing, it'll only be allowed in the POM, IMU, IRN, IG. Small indoor cultiv, plant cultivation and processing facilities of five, 5,000 square feet or less would be allowed in the CCMU. This is also more of a placeholder until we kind of understand more from the state since this hasn't happened yet. And it's kind of a learn-as-we-grow, learn-as-we-go process. But the fourth one is about simplified plats. This amendment is to remove the statement that requires planning commission approval of a simplified plat. Simplified plats have been routinely approved on the staff level. This issue will also resolve a tidy, and tidy up parts of the appendix regarding signature blocks. And this amendment is more of a clerical error and really isn't going to change any sort of process. So to give you a heads up, we'll be discussing this more on May 9th and hopefully introducing this on the 16th and approving it on the 23rd. Any questions or comments?
Thank you, Drew.
No questions? Comments? Close the public hearing. Anybody, anyone have any comments?
There's one thing that we, a statement that we need to make. We'd like to enter into the record certification of advertisements for this hearing and the planning commission filed by reference.
Thank you.
And generally, we leave the record open for ten days in case people are watching and like, "Oh, shoot, I missed my chance. I can send something in."
Thank you. Attorney?
Thank you.
You want to be mayor? Remember approval for the minutes?
Madam Mayor hereby approve, move for the approval of the minutes as presented for the mayor and council meetings held on March 7th, 14th, 21st, and 28th of 2023.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. For consent agenda?
Madam Mayor hereby move that the consent agenda, Madam Mayor hereby move that all the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of ordinance to accept an easement from the Hagerstown Housing Authority?
Madam Mayor, I hereby move for the approval of an ordinance to accept an easement from the Hagerstown Housing Authority for outdoor exercise equipment funded and installed by Vester Community of Hope. When completed to the satisfaction of the Public Works Department, the city will accept the donation of the equipment and maintain the equipment in the easement area for 20 years.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of an ordinance to accept an easement from Bowman 2000 LLC.
Madam Mayor hereby move for the approval of an ordinance to accept an easement from Bowman 2000 LLC to clarify ownership and document maintenance responsibilities for lighting, art, signs, and artistic alley.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Introduction of an ordinance to accept two easements from Columbia Gas of Maryland.
Madam Mayor, I have been moved for the introduction of an ordinance to accept two easements from Columbia Gas of Maryland for access to maintenance of an existing storm drain and the installation of a public sidewalk along Sycamore Street.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Introduction of an ordinance to grant easement to Columbia Gas of Maryland.
Madam Mayor hereby move for the introduction of an ordinance to grant an easement for the installation of a gas main on lands of the city adjacent to Frederick Street near Funkstown.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. A resolution authorizing the execution of a perpetual impermanent easement between the City of Hagerstown and Purini Industrial Land LLC developer for the purpose of construction, constructing, maintaining, operating, repairing, and replacing a water line on land situated on the western side of Creighton Boulevard and the northern side of Purini Avenue in Hagerstown, Maryland.
Madam Mayor hereby move for the approval of a resolution authorizing the execution of a permanent easement between the City of Hagerstown and Purini Industrial Land LLC for the purpose of constructing, maintaining, operating, repairing, and replacing a water line on land situated on the western side of Creighton Boulevard and northern side of Purini Avenue in Hagerstown, Maryland.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of a resolution authorizing the execution of a temporary construction easement between the City of Hagerstown and Purini Industrial Land LLC developer for the purpose of construction, constructing, why can't I say that? Constructing a water line on land situated on the western side of Creighton Boulevard and the northern side of Purini Avenue in Hagerstown, Maryland.
So move, Madam Mayor.
Was there two of them? Did I just read them?
Well, they say exactly the same thing.
Oh, okay. Discussion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Sorry, I'm out of rhythm. Approval of memorandum of, of understanding between the City of Hagerstown and the U.S. Marshal Service Fugitive Task Force.
Madam Mayor hereby move for the mayor and council approval to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the U.S. Marshal Service Fugitive Task Force. This program carries no cost to the city and overtime and other expenses will be reimbursed by the federal government of the United States.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of a memorandum of understanding between the City of Hagerstown and the Federal Bureau of Investigation Prince George's Cross Border Safe Streets Task Force. Prince George's Cross Border Safe Streets Task Force?
Madam Mayor, I hereby move for mayor and council approval to enter a memorandum of understanding with the Federal Bureau of Investigation, Prince George's Cross Border Safe Streets Task Force. This program carries no cost to the city, and over time and other expenses will be reimbursed by the federal government of the United States.
Second.
TR.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval to accept grant agreement from the Maryland Energy Administration?
Madam Mayor, I hereby move to authorize the city to accept a Maryland Smart Energy Communities Grant from the Maryland Energy Administration in the amount of $33,375. This grant will be matched with $5,891 of city funds and will be used to replace the existing lights in the central parking lot with new energy-efficient fixtures.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of an exemption from the city code Chapter 155 Noise?
Madam Mayor hereby move for the approval and exemption from the city code Chapter 155 Noise. This exemption is being granted in accordance with Section 155-5M to the City Chapel and Pastor Zachary Camp for events on April 10th, I'm sorry, April 20th and 21st, 2023, from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., June 10th, 2023, from 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m., and Sundays from April 23rd, 2023, to November 5, 2023, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. The services will be held at 227 East Washington Street, which is a corner of East Washington and Cannon Avenue. In addition to the exemption, permits for an assembly and erecting a tent are required.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discontinuation of Borough Box operation services?
Madam Mayor hereby move that the mayor and city council authorize staff to discontinue operations of the Borough Box Services effective June 30th, 2023. This would allow resources to be shifted to where they are more required in the current market, as well as open the prior space for other options slash ventures.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of a resolution authorizing an application for a Main Street Improvement Program grant?
Madam Mayor, I hereby move for the mayor and council approval of a resolution to authorize an application for a Main Street Improvement Program grant through the Department of Housing and Community Development in the amount of $25,000 with no match required. The funding will be used for beautification of city streets and getting more feet on the street and downtown.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. State Administrator?
I just want to thank the Parks Department, Engineering Department, Community Engagement for a very nice Earth Day celebration, the community cleanup downtown, and also the planting of trees and other stuff at Hager, at Hager House and City Park. And appreciate Councilmember Burnett and Schindler showing up, even though you left too early and didn't get to plant a tree. I wish I'd have left with you. But I appreciate all the effort, and I think it's going to make a big difference in the Hager House area. It was, it was a nice day. And I just want to, I just want to thank HPD again. This has been a long time coming for these drones, and dirt bikes are only just a part of what these drones are going to help take care of. We're not going to tell, we'll never tell everybody how completely these things operate, but what you saw on the screens today is just a very small indication of the technology that these guys have learned and that they've, they're now certified for, and it's going to make a difference. You're not going to see it overnight, but it is going to make a difference over time. And I sincerely appreciate the chief, the captains, and all of the officers that have taken part in this, have seen the mission of what we are trying to do here, and are executing it in the best way possible. I think it's going to make a big difference. So thank you to those guys, and that's it for me.
Councilmember Schindler?
So, you know, to echo a little bit about what Scott said. You know, I want to thank all of the citizens that came up and talked tonight. You know, it takes a lot of courage to come up and talk about this, but they're echoing what I would say most citizens are frustrated with, including us up here on the council with the dirt bikes. You know, hopefully, we start to see results from this. You know, I certainly will be vocal that, you know, we will, we will not let up on the gas with this, you know? This is something that we have to keep pressure on, and HPD is doing a very good job. You know, I appreciate them coming out tonight and clearing the air, and we're going to keep up on this. And, you know, just appreciate everybody's efforts coming out tonight.
Councilmember Burnett?
I want to echo kudos and thank you to HPD for the work they're doing with addressing the dirt bikes. We see it, I contacted Captain Langston myself yesterday with a young person on a dirt bike in my own neighborhood. So we see it, we feel the frustration, and I'm just thankful that we have men and women that's willing to think creatively to address this problem. I will be sharing chief's sentiments tonight on my social media page so we can spread that awareness that we are doing something about it and that we hear you. So I would encourage everyone to do the same, so we can get that message out there that, you know, we're working on this issue. And also, congratulations to everyone that participated in the Hub City 100-miler that started earlier this year. There were people who had hundreds and thousands mile walks, really a lot of effort to promote healthy living and get out there and move. We did our final mile this past Saturday at City Park, and we did over 1.5 mile walk, actually supposed to be one, but we got a little bit lost in the scenery of City Park. And it was so beautiful. We just kept on walking before the rain started. And Councilmember Schindler and I presented Proclamations for Earth Day and Arbor Day. And yes, we did have prior engagements afterward, Scott, but we were there in spirit. And we also received the banner for the Tree City for the 38th year, so.
My spirit was very strong the next day, so.
Council? Councilmember Bruschi?
Well, I'm pretty sure the mayor will tell you I've said enough tonight, but I tell you, I, I can't thank HPD enough on what they've been trying to accomplish. I know that, I can guarantee you, they got tired of hearing from me. I was on them all the time about getting these licenses, getting these guys trained. Found out the FAA closed their office for six weeks. Nobody could get their license. Nobody could set it up. So things got pushed back, slowed down, but even prior to drones. I mean, I know what these guys were trying to do all the time. And that, you know, I'm very happy that no one in recent years has been injured. I mean severely in an accident. Because, like I said, you know, it happened 11, 12 years ago, and it was devastating to this community. So for the individual that got hit in the SUV and for the family of the one that hit them. And the chief is right. I mean, you know, people who, unfortunately, you know, everybody gets offended, you know? And, you know, my prayers went out to back those people back then, and they go out to the lady here this evening that hopefully things get resolved there. So keep up the good work. Thank you all for coming in and speaking your minds. We appreciate it. And just so you know, we do hear you every time.
Councilmember Ratchey?
Obviously, just to echo the comments and appreciate the chief and staff coming in to give that presentation. You know, obviously, I'm sure a lot of people follow social media, and there's sort of these two school of thoughts that are out there as soon as this happens, right? Half the folks are like, why are you telling everybody, you know, like, you know, now everybody's going to know? And, you know, and, you know, the school of thought there is, if you don't tell anybody, then you think nothing's being done. And if you do, you know, tell everybody, then, then, you know, it's going to change the mindset. And so I think that, you know, it's good that the public knows, it's good that the public hears and sees what our HPD staff are doing in this regard. But at the same time, as Scott said, and I think, you know, folks have that frustration of wanting to see action, you know, and resolve overnight. It's going to take time, but I think that time has come now where there's an actual change, you know, in that activity level. You know, in my formative years, I guess it was the dual highway, and Bob, it was, you know,
Dual highway?
Something different.
It's a dual highway?
You remember when that was shut down? And so I was. So all I'm saying is like, those things happen, you know, over the course of time. And, you know, to the comments about calling in the tips, you know, I think about that probably more than anything else because a lot of the times these are kids, and, you know, you don't want to see something happen. And so when they go past my house, you know, I'm not calling because I want the kid to get in trouble. I'm calling so that the kid doesn't get in trouble, you know, physically. And so that's a change in mindset that you have over time.
Thank you. Back to you.
Yeah, I'm going to add one thing. We didn't mention it yet tonight, but Thursday morning, we'll be having a joint meeting with our Washington County Commissioners at the R.C. Wilson Plant in Williamsport to talk about water and to have, hopefully, a fantastic conversation about moving forward together. So I look forward to that Thursday morning.
Yes. So thank you, councilmembers Burnett and Schindler, for holding it down. And then also, just for, also, anytime that there is, can someone do it? I feel like it's you two, and so thank you for stepping in there. Also, Hagerstown Area Religious Council came in today, and I believe it may have been 12 to 15 leaders of faith from throughout the city. And I feel like the two hours that we spent together was very productive. I was able to share with them some of the things that we as an elected body would like to see, and also how they could partner with us. And one of the things that they said was that maybe if we got them a small synopsis at the end of the meeting that they could then share with their congregations. And so I think that that's something that's easy and doable. And I think getting the word out to the people that are sitting in the church services or mass is a good thing, to have the faith leaders in partnership with us. So I thank them for doing that. Spitzer Pieces this weekend, and we are featuring for the first time Complex. And so a couple of years ago, about eight years ago, I used to bring Complex to Hagerstown, and he would do this workshop in Wheaton Park called How to Dream. And it's great to have him come back and feature in poetry, but also looking to get him back to be doing those things again. When kids wouldn't show up, him and I would go out, and we would find kids either at the fairgrounds or in the park and then teach this workshop. And so I'm just really excited about him coming into town, poetry, and hopefully a collaboration moving forward. I got very choked up with Second Chance Month proclamation and reentry, and I want to share that that's very near and dear to my heart. I met Mrs. Hayes as I was a mediator going out to the prison and doing reentry mediation work. And I met her, and when you go to the prison, regardless if you're someone going in to give services or you're going to go see someone, the same level of nervousness is always there. And even though I was going in as a mediator, I mean, the whole process was just a lot. And I just, I met her, and over time, we went from hi to how's your day? To, you know, oh, what goes on, you know? And from there, a relationship was built. And relationships absolutely matter. And so to be, to be mayor now and to see that she's doing this, still doing this work, and now is going into a reentry position into the prison, it just touched my heart because I met her checking me in to go provide services in the prison, and then gatekeepers. I feel like we are a team. Hagerstown is a team. And one of the things that I absolutely cannot take is divisiveness. I'm not going to lead in this position in a way that is going to hurt this city. And so when I see partners that come together and give their all, that reach those populations and those people that we are not reaching, that we are not touching, then my heart is there. I am a team player. I have been traumatized by everything in this city. And I still sit and serve in this seat with this entire elected body in mind. Not my trauma, not what I've gone through, but this entire elected body in mind and the staff. And I just ask, moving forward, I'm not the person that's going to have those conversations on social media. I have four grown children. I don't allow them to do that. I like to sit down face-to-face and look people in the face and talk because I'm not blame shifting. Everything is my issue. Everything is my problem, and that's how I lead. And I'd appreciate it if we all get our language together and we understand we're in this together. You cannot economically develop without investing in people. And so that's where my heart is, and I love this city. And I'm not going to hurt it, but I'm not going to play the divisive game either. And with that, we are adjourned.